Had said something about open session. Can you give us a little guidance on that before we turn that over?
Well, certainly, Mayor, if there are... I certainly can give some general information as well as the chief and the manager are here as well. But if there is specific legal advice, then I will advise the council whether I think it is appropriate to do that in open session. And if it's not, then we will need to have a closed session to discuss that information.
Okay. All right. Councilmembers Ingram and Waddell.
So first of all, we would like to thank each member of council, Mr. Mayor, for your attendance this evening. We do recognize that this is maybe unprecedented and a bit difficult to conceive how we got to the point of needing to call for two council members to call a special meeting. So we do, first of all, want to thank you for your attendance. We also would like to state that it is not our intention to circumvent the process as it stands. We did, however, feel as if there were some conversations that could not continue to delay, and we felt the urgency of needing to bring those conversations to the table. And so that is why we've called this meeting today. So what has happened is, we have gone through and created a timeline of events in regards to the protest at the Market House, and I would like to briefly go through those. I won't read it in its entirety. If at any point someone would like for me to provide a copy, I'd be happy to do that. But this started actually on July the 4th, not necessarily on the 8th, as one may perceive, because on July the 4th, we received a text message from a council member regarding a tent, a flag, and a banner that was set up at the Market House with a sign which read, "Save the Market House," in front of it. There were two individuals in that photograph who were set up at the Market House, essentially asserting their right to be able to present their message. And so when that message came forward, I think one of the council members sent back a question in that thread and asked, "Did they have a permit?" I didn't hear anything else about that conversation. And then we moved to the 8th of July. We're at about 8:00. Protesters can be seen beginning to set up at the Market House. And when I say "set up," I mean setting up tents and intimating that they had intended to be there for the long haul until their concerns were heard. This could be seen on ABC 11. It was covered on July the 8th by the news outlets. On July the 9th, we received an email asking if we had an ordinance... A council member sent an email asking if there was an ordinance that prohibited temporary structures on city property. So that essentially began the dialogue between the council in regards to what was... From that point, from that email forward, there was a dialogue that ensued as to what was allowable and what was not at that particular structure. If you move forward a bit, the conversation turned towards some concern about the activity at the Market House. So for example, there was a concern that a gas can was at the Market House, which, given the history of the previous protest and the fires at the Market House, was a valid concern. And so the response was that the city manager was going to send somebody to go and check it, have it checked out, and it was found that there was no viable threat to the Market House at that time. That was the first time that we, as a council, via email, had been sort of briefed that there may have been no citable offense with the protesters who were downtown. Now, I bring that up because at some point, the conversations continued in terms of being able to push to determine what is citable and what will allow for the removal of the protesters at the Market House. So I'm trying not to read everything, so I just want to kind of take my time and give you the brief. So move forward, we received another briefing from the city manager via email that intimated that they had gone and checked there didn't appear to be citable violations that outweighed the protesters' constitutional rights to peacefully protest. And so that was when the introduction of this being a part of the protesters' constitutional rights seemed to come before the council. And so then it seemed to kind of move into the direction of continuing the conversation in that vein. And so at that time, there was also a press release that was issued, a statement that was issued by the mayor. And in that statement, the mayor intimated that we were aware of the peaceful protesters and encouraged residents to maintain peace and refrain from impeding pedestrian or vehicular traffic or infringing upon private property in the area around the Market House. And so the council continued in the vein, or it seemingly continued in the vein, that these were peaceful protesters who were exercising their constitutional right, and that as long as they did not violate the pedestrian or vehicular traffic issues, or did not infringe upon private property in the area around the Market House, that we would consider it as such. On July 9th at 6:30 PM, a group called Citizen Care Project participated in a walk from the Cumberland County Courthouse to the Fayetteville Police Department, upon which time during this walk, protesters from the Market House engaged with protesters from the Citizens Care Project in a pretty tense way. And I think that when we saw those videos, we can all agree that it was uncomfortable and it was also probably very unnecessary, the interaction that the two groups had. And so we do not take... You know, I think if it would have been the other way around, we would have all held the same perception about how that exchange happened. After that, we received several emails about the protesters. And one such email, and I just want to briefly just give a part, I'm not going to indicate where the email came from, but one such email stated, "So my question is this, when are you collectively going to do something about what is going on? What right do they have to camp at the Market House? These are the same trouble-making hoodlums who set fire to it. What are they doing guarding it against vandalism? It is time for you collectively to take a stand on behalf of the rest of us. A person screaming and spitting in someone's face at this time is committing assault. I want answers. We want answers. This cannot continue. Please break it up, or I'm afraid the same people walking tonight will walk again, but it will be down Hay Street and around the Market House, and the outcome could turn On July 10th, we got another email from our city attorney's office indicating that the Constitution does allow for peaceful protest and that there was no provision that had been found that could make the protesters move. There was also an indicator that we would be getting that press release, but this came after the press release had gone out. Additionally, on the 10th, the mayor requested that the assistant attorneys provide some context to the conversations to include other possible legal remedies. Also, on the 10th, we received a response from the city attorney's office indicating that there are legal remedies that were discussed by staff to relocate the protesters in the event a compromise is not reached. And I'm assuming that this is the compromise that was indicated during the previous conversation or the previous text email that indicated that the mayor would be meeting with the protesters to see if they could come to a compromise to move them from the Market House. On July the 11th, a Facebook Live video was shared by one of the founders of the Ville's Voices. The video showed members of the community approaching the courthouse as a demonstration. They were met with the sheriff who blocked off the parking at the courthouse. During this live video, it was reported that the mayor met with members of the protest group, the Ville's Voices, the day prior at 4:30 PM. No details have been provided regarding that meeting, other than the information provided in the live video. In short, the leadership of the Ville's Voices indicated in the live video that they had met with the mayor, and he offered them an exchange... He made an offer to them in exchange for them moving from the Market House, and that they were publicly declining the offer. In the video, there was a statement made, "If you arrest," names redacted, "Fayetteville is going to start a war. We are this close from telling everybody to do what you want." I mentioned that, and I mentioned the prior email, because to me, and I think to all of us, both of those sentiments were very synonymous. They both carried some air of threatening posture. They both had an air of, "If you don't, then we will." And they both... They were pretty synonymous. I don't think that one could really be separated distinguishably from the other. There was a difference in the stance, however, that was taken regarding the two messages. And I will not refer specifically to the emails, because I do not want to perpetuate the narrative that there is a motive in this conversation. But I will say that I think if we, as council members, go back and review the responses to those two messages, and we can review one person, two very distinct, different responses to those messages, there seems to be a discrepancy in how we're responding to both sides of this conversation. One seemed very amenable and very kind and approachable, and the other response was, you know, more, "What are we going to do about this?" So I asked the question to the council, what is the difference between those two statements, the one on Facebook Live and the email that was received from the member of the community? Moving forward, on July the 12th at approximately noon, councilmember Waddell, myself, and councilmember Kenson and Ingram, met with leadership from the Ville's Voices at City Hall to discuss the requests they were making. I presented information regarding the Citizen Review Board, and all three of us committed to engaging with the council to discuss, including researching some of these requests or demands through the mayor's established committee structure. At that time, we requested that the group discuss with those at the Market House the information that we shared in that meeting, and that they request that they break down the encampment as a show of good faith. Understanding the need to stand firm in the mission of not appearing to have been bullied into leaving, we all understood that it may be the following day, which was Tuesday, instead of that Monday, before movement was seen. On the 12th of July, the same day, at 6:12, the mayor sent an email indicating that the situation was being monitored, the protesters had been spoken with individually about the situation, and that the mayor and the mayor pro tem had scheduled a meeting with the manager and the city attorney to discuss the situation. So we were to hold for more detail. On July 12th, an email was received from a citizen, and that email was a very lengthy email, but it went on to include the five demands put forth by the protesters under the label of the Ville's Voices. Those demands included a Citizen Review Board, not an advisory board, public-facing police misconduct webpage, separate internal affairs from police department, separate internal affairs from police department, adopt best practices from comparative police reform efforts, fund community center, community garden at Orange Street School. The Ville's Voices and demands were formally presented to the council in writing via that email. On the 13th at 7:57, Mayor Colvin sent counsel and the city attorney a word document with legal opinion, but did not indicate who compiled it. Also, on the 13th at 7:57, CM Harris sent an email to the mayor and the city attorney. And in that email, he asked essentially if we would be having a meeting, and if so, would the Attorney General's Office be represented? Additionally, the information as to what went over to the AG was requested, and the city attorney provided that to each of us. Mayor Colvin sent an email indicating to the clerk that he and the mayor pro tem were calling a special meeting to discuss a proposal submitted by Fayetteville PAC. On the 13th at 3:46, councilmember Ingram asked if the Ville's Voices would be included in the special meeting. At 3:47, the mayor responded, "No." On the 14th at 9:31, councilmember Dawkins asked that info be added to the special meeting. In that request, I don't remember ever hearing a response as to whether or not that would happen. Moving ahead, on July the 14th, the Ville's Voices ended their sit-in in protest at the Market House and affirmed that they would give council 60 days to provide them with some next steps regarding how we would address their concerns. Several council members requested some form of meeting for discussion of the events that had been transpiring. If that is true, and these can be represented as the statements of facts that we can agree to, then convening a meeting to discuss this and provide accurate information to the council and the citizens of this city seemed to be important. And that is why councilmember Ingram and I called for a special meeting regarding this situation. And so our questions really can be summarized by asking, during the days the protests began and ended, were there any arrests made in retaliation in relation to the occupancy? Traffic citations issued as a result of the occupancy? Beyond the optics, were there any tangible issues, accidents, or injuries resulting from the peaceful protest? That's externally. Internally, our question would be, what is the final word on the legal recourse given the situation at the Market House? And we are prepared, we do understand that the city attorney would like to have that discussion. There are some other questions that accompany that, and we're prepared to pause that until we go into that particular question, until we go into closed session. But we would like to give a definitive answer to the community, because this has been an ongoing conversation, and we are getting these questions, and we would like to be able to answer them as a body and not just as individuals. Also, we'd like to know, did any other member of council speak with anyone at the Market House regarding the protest? And what are we, as a council, willing to do moving forward regarding the concerns expressed? And I'm not asking for... And nor is councilmember Ingram, we're not asking for action in terms of deliverables, but we're asking for, what can we state as a council, what our next steps are going to be? And the hope is that, as a council, we would see fit to address these issues in a way whereby we provide some timeframes within which we will be willing to give some different responses regarding these requests. And then last but not least, we're asking, are we equally expressing concern regarding unlawful activity? We have noticed that this particular group of protesters, who all appear to be very youthful, so most of them in their 20s, most of them black, have been met with some very degrading names, particularly from the community, as we can see by the email that I referenced. And I think that, as a body, we have to be willing to ensure that, just as we provide an opportunity for any group to peacefully demonstrate, that we provide that for every group. And that is without exception. Someone asked me, if it had been the KKK, and they had wanted to set up under the Market House and peacefully protest, would my position have been the same? And I assert to you, as a black woman, regardless of what the group may have been, if they are exercising their constitutional right, then I would not have had a leg to stand on in saying that they could not. And so this is the information that we have for you this evening. And again, I do want to thank all of you for coming, and I do, from the bottom of my heart, truly appreciate the fact that you all found value in continuing this conversation. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. I yield the floor to councilmember Ingram.
Councilwoman Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. One of the things that I wanted to point out directly, my reasoning for calling this meeting and my involvement, I feel a sense of to be on the ground in my district a lot and feel responsible for things that happen. And so on July 4th, I did go down and talk to the gentleman who had his tent up. I did go down and talk with the protesters who decided to camp out. And I guess there were opposing individuals that I made sure to talk with, but one of the biggest questions that I had that councilmember Waddell spoke to was, are we implementing the law the same? I know that I get calls from residents about ATVs going up and down Bragg Boulevard and other locations and in neighborhoods. And one of the first things I questioned when I heard about there being ATVs, I said, "Well, how did they make it down that far?" And I think more of a legal question for Chief Hawkins. For me, how does something like that happen? How are we not... And you don't have the answer, but are we implementing laws the same? Which would be my biggest question. But that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you, councilwoman Ingram and Waddell. So is there a question for staff, or was there some...
Yes, Mayor Colvin. Yes, there is. So if Chief Hawkins can please approach the microphone, because I would like to offer some information to the citizenry and also to this body in regards to the question about what the activity looked like around the Market House. Were there any arrests that were made in conjunction with the peaceful protest? Were there any traffic citations that were issued as a result of the peaceful protest? What did it look like in terms of illegal activity at the Market House in your professional estimation?
The whole six days that you're there, is that your question?
Yes, ma'am.
There's, at this time, one person that has received a citation for roadway, and then there's 10 warrants for the actual individuals that were on ATVs.
And the ATV citations would be separate from the Ville's Voices, because they were there...
They were there for that.
But they were not a part of the actual protest. They were not a part of that body.
That is correct.
Okay. So there's been one site...
One person who was part of that body has a citation.
Okay.
And then 10 other warrants to be issued.
For the ATV issues. Thank you, ma'am. No further questions. I guess the other aspect would really be to this body, if we can have some dialogue as to how we move forward with this conversation, because I think that it is important for us to make a determination and then to present that information to the citizens as to how we want to move forward. And Mayor Colvin, quite honestly, my desire is not for us to deliberate or debate it tonight, but really to see if we can agree that these concerns rise to the level of being able to be pushed to your committee structure and allowing the committees to be able to do the work of researching and being able to present information, not just to that group, but to the city at large, as to how we may be able to respond to these requests. And again, we indicated to the group that not all of them would be something... Excuse me, that we would move on. I think that, as far as the community garden, there's been some work already in the community to be able to address that particular request. So I think most certainly the issues, and I'll be very specific so that we don't have to play the guessing game. The Citizen Review Board, we've already indicated to them that that's something that, at this point, you know, when we sat in the meeting for about an hour, we expressed to them the timeline, we showed them the work that's been done, and we explained to them that now it's something that's in Raleigh's hands and that they will have to do the work. And when speaking to our legislative... Some of our legislators from Raleigh, we received the indication that it will be at least six months to a year before they would be able to see any movement on that base just solely upon the process of the workflow at the General Assembly. But the public-facing misconduct page, certainly to look into that. Separate internal affairs from police department, looking into that. Adopting best practices from comparative police reform efforts, look into that. So those items, items two, three, and four of their list of five, would be the ones that I'd ask, is this body willing to say, "Let's take those to committee and do more research on them?" And that's all, Mayor Colvin. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe at our last meeting, I think we unanimously approved a resolution of the city of Fayetteville supporting the creation of a citizen advisory board. So my guidance is, we don't worry about the Citizen Review Board just yet. And I believe it was councilmember Larry Wright that made the motion to approve this resolution. I think the committee needs to take up the advisory board idea, because it was, I believe, unanimous before we do any review. But I think the committee also should take into consideration review versus advisory, and then what the differences are. Because maybe we start with an advisory, and as Council Lady Waddell said, it may be six months or so before the legislature can take up a review. So that would be my guidance there. And since there doesn't appear to be a lot of detail about what we're supposed to talk about, I want to jump right to some of the points that Council Lady Waddell made and ask guidance from the city attorney, because I sent an email out Tuesday or Wednesday or so of last week. I'd spoken with the city manager, and there is an ordinance that says, "Council, city attorney..."
Councilwoman Dawkins, if it's some specific legal...
Yes.
Legal has said...
The question is, is the Market House a park? I thought Council Lady Waddell's email a few days ago said, you know, in effect, is the Market House considered to be a park? Because we have a specific ordinance that says you cannot put a structure... And I consider those four tents as structures, even if they are temporary. My goodness, if they were permanent, that'd be even worse, but without a permit. And I don't mind folks protesting as long as they got a permit, which means they paid for it. And we know there's a bunch of money involved, because all of us got emails yesterday saying that this organization is separating themselves from maybe this lady that may have kind of gotten it started. So there's a lot of stuff going on. So my question in the end is, is the Market House a park? And if not, it's Count, City Attorney McDonald, is your guidance that we need, or maybe city manager, that we need to expand that ordinance? Because I truly don't know... I truly don't... That's nice. I truly don't know if that is a park. I know it's one market square, but just like the Redwoods National Park is a national park, but Muir Woods, which has thousands of majestic redwoods, is a national monument. So there's differences between the two. And then my last question was, Council Lady Banks McLaughlin sent in about money going to the Market House, because I get told every week that the federal government writes a check every year that does something with the Market House. I need to...
Councilwoman Dawkins, let's stay on...
I mean, I got like seven questions, Mr. Mayor.
But they need to be related to protesters.
Well, they sure are, because I believe those protesters were at the Market House, and is that Market House a park, or do we need to expand the ordinance so that this doesn't happen again? Because any reasonable person would deduce, in my law school days of training, which was not as long as Ms. McDonald's, any reasonable person would deduce that what was being done was not legal, and it was a public safety violation, and they should have been moved. And I think the problem was, we didn't know where in the devil to move them to, till I think maybe Monday, when we thought, "Well, maybe we can put them in either Festival Park or Clark Park." Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to now giving Council, City Attorney McDonald, a chance to speak.
Well, thank you for doing that. She has the law degree and license here. We do have a couple of questions, but Attorney McDonald, when we start getting into the legalities and the details, I think I'll turn it over to you to have some of this conversation in executive session. But let's see if, before... Are you able to answer some of what he said without that?
So the only question that I'd be comfortable answering in open session is that it is my opinion that the Market House is not a park. As it relates to his other questions, I think it would be more appropriate for us to have discussion pursuant to the attorney-client privilege about... I think his question was about recommendations, those type of things. Those would be an appropriate discussion in closed session.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm ready at your convenience, Mayor.
All right. Let's see if we can... I have Councilwomen Ingram and Waddell again. We'll see if what they have is something related to that, or can we go into the next session to get a little more detail, because we're coming up on a hard deadline at 5:00.
Just clear... I do want to add, Councilmember Dawkins, you are correct in the terms of the Citizens Advisory Board, which was kind of, you know, the irony of it, when I sat here and we voted on it, I asked, what were they going to do with the Citizens Advisory Board? What exactly were we going to do with it? And the conversation that I remember us having was, yes, we would pass the Citizens Advisory Board, and we would go to committees to work on getting us to the level of a Citizens Review Board and working with the General Assembly. And I should say, well, by the grace of God, Mayor just got added to the Governor's Task Force. So I'm hopeful that we will be moving that way very swiftly. To the second part, you know, I'm allowing history to kind of take me through all of what we're experiencing. And I guess I could somewhat jokingly say, this is 1964 all over again, because I do remember when demonstrators started talking about Freedom Summer, the president or local mayors started implementing ordinances that worked against demonstrators. And I like to think of Fayetteville as a special place where we do things a little bit differently, and we're good at what we do. To have had something like a sit-in at the Market House, though whether I agreed with it or was against it or for it, whether that may be, I think what it was all about was being heard. As I sit on this council, and I think sometimes we don't always listen to each other, and all we want to do in the eyes of each other is to be heard by each other. So to step into their shoes as a protester, who... Why we are here is because of the unjust killing of a black male and systematic racism and just racism in itself. People are finding ways to have a voice and be heard. Thank you, Mayor. But that's just what I will say. And I just don't want us to move too fast into working against our people when it's our job to be here to work for them. Thank you.
Let me say this before we get too far to the left or right. It's not 1964, and I'm not going to... I know, like, I know. There are some remnants that remind us of that day, but I certainly have been a champion for social justice and continue to be. However... However, tonight's conversation, guys, so that we don't become like this, is to, let's discuss how we can make sure that the voices of everyone is heard, because with that unanimous vote that you've pointed for, and I think this council has said time and time again that we want to have different parties at the table at various times to hear their concerns so that they can help do it, and that's why we formed the committees, that I'm hoping that we can dive into the details of that that we may not be able to solve tonight. But moving this along a little bit, because I do, would like to talk to the attorney. I'll go to Councilmembers Waddell. I see Councilmember Dawkins has red-lighted it. And then let's see if we can get Ms. McDonald to talk to us about the word in here that none of us are qualified to talk about, which is the legality. That's on the paper tonight. So I want to make sure that she can talk to that a little bit. So go to Councilmember Waddell. If we can try to keep it brief and back to Councilman Dawkins.
Absolutely. I'd just like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we move the public facing police, the conversation regarding the public facing police misconduct webpage, the separating of the internal affairs from police department, adopting the conversation about best practices from comparative police reform efforts, those items, that we would move those particular items to discussion in the committees. You can determine which committees they would go to, and I'd just like to make a motion that we, that we agree, that we do that, and that we would begin the work of having those conversations. Am I phrasing that motion correctly?
You did. I just want to clarify one thing. So the committees certainly, if it doesn't fall within, it certainly would fall on the external. So I think that covers it all. I would hope, and I certainly support and think that all of those items will be tackled. It was just procedurally, you know, usually the chairs, I think we were going to have a meeting later this week to talk about what goes where. But, you know, if council thinks we can get there in a reasonable amount of time to still give us a few minutes to talk to the attorney, fine, but I mean, I think...
I'm not even asking necessarily that we determine what goes where tonight, just that we will agree that it will go to committee, either of the...
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for, whatever you all's pleasure is, I'm all for all items, community improved, that it will improve that the race relations of this community be dealt with in these committees. Okay? And so however you all would like to do that, before you do your motion, let me go to Councilman Dawkins. Let's see where he is on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I will support Council Lady's motion once it gets a proper second. I wanted to go back to what Council Lady Ingram said. She is using words that are overstepping what the city council voted unanimously to do. So I'm going to actually read to you so that you know what the resolution specifically says. It doesn't say anything about that we're going to discuss an advisory board moving to a review board. Okay? The resolution specifically says that the mayor and council will advocate for the creation of a citizen advisory board to provide greater oversight, review, and accountability on all aspects of policing. That's what this council voted unanimously to do. So that's what this, if we refer it to the committee, that's fine with me. And at some point, I could see that, you know, I think the next meeting, we're going to be talking about, you know, they want to talk about a review board, but this council voted unanimously to advocate for the creation of a citizen advisory board. So if I misunderstood that, then I need to be corrected, but then I'd need to go back and listen and watch the recording, because I think it was still unanimous. But we just don't need to be speeding through all this. And I agree with the mayor, this isn't 1964. And when I was getting ready to go to Westlawn Elementary School, and my principal was Alma Eastum, and that school is named for her today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Council, okay, Council, I'll go to Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin shortly. Council, so as I explained to, to some members of the Ville's Voices, that the legislator tells us what they can do, you know, whether it's called this, called that, if it doesn't have any authority to do anything. I think the real meat and potatoes is what we're asking them for the, what are the capabilities of the board, whatever it's called. So definitely a committee discussion, sounds like to me, like a number of the other things. So let me go to Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin. Hopefully, then we can give some consensus or whatever, that we would send these to the committees. Hopefully, the committees will meet this, the co-chairs will meet this week to kind of say, you know, what are the priorities, first, second, third, fourth, and hopefully, you know, many of these items can be addressed at that time. So Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I had my hand raised up, and of course, you guys probably weren't able to see it.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I did want to commend the Ville's Voice, because it was, in fact, a peaceful protest from what I've seen online and some of the calls that I received. I think that they spoke up, they used their voices, and they demanded change, and that's why we're currently here right now regarding this meeting. Just like it was mentioned, we don't have any ordinance that's currently in place explaining or stating that there's no camping nor setting up at the Marcus House. In fact, I was the individual who sent out a message regarding when it was another protester out there with a tent and table, and I reached out and asked, do we have an ordinance or, you know, do that person need some sort of permit? I didn't get any response back. Days later, the Ville's Voice, they set up. And I want the viewers, listener, audience to understand too that they were out there protesting. It seemed like we're only hearing the bad part of it. I hadn't heard anybody mention on council, to the public, that they not only protested, which, it's nothing wrong with protesting. Protesting is meant to make people uneasy and uncomfortable. They not only, they not only protest, they set up shop, they said, and they fed the community. From my understanding, they even set up a table for voter's registration, and I don't hear anyone mentioning that. So I think we need to keep that in mind and moving forward. We just have to figure out what's our next move. But I just wanted to make that statement to kind of tell everybody some of the positives, the positive things that the Ville's Voice did. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And let me just say this, I certainly did not have a problem with what they were doing, what they were saying. I did still and still believe that it was not the safest manner to do some of those things. And there is statute that supports what the city has the ability to do, which maybe the attorney can talk to us about that. So, you know, there's ordinance, and then there's state law statute. And of course, the statute trumps state law. And so I heard that directly from the mouth of the attorney general himself, and there was some case law that was sent that I think the attorney can get into. So just want to make sure that we're not confusing the public and not giving the totality of it. And I don't think I've heard anyone, you know, negatively appear on this body, say that, you know, they didn't do some great things down there. And I have a lot of respect anytime you can sleep outside in the summertime for six or seven days. I got a lot of respect for that. So I'll go to Councilmember Waddell, if you want to do that prior to the closed session. I guess it's...
I'd like to just, I think that Councilmember Ingram seconded my motion. Did you second it?
Okay.
And so I'd like to just...
And what is, can you repeat it for me?
The motion is that we refer items, the following items to committee, the committee of, you know, we can discuss it...
One of the council committees.
One of the mayor's appointed committees. And the following would be, and the only reason that I'm not including the citizen review board is because we have already established, and council has already received information indicating that a citizen review board, there's already an ordinance in place for that. And so I'm not putting that on the list because there's no additional work that we need to do at this level. The work now that needs to be done for a citizen review board happens in Raleigh, and we've explained that to the Ville's Voices, they understood it just fine. And so that doesn't necessarily need to, we don't need to continue to duplicate that work. But I am asking that we send to committee a public facing police misconduct webpage, researching that, researching separating internal affairs from police department, researching adopting best practices from comparative police reform efforts. So those three items being sent to committee.
So it was a motion by Councilmember Waddell, the second by Councilmember Ingram. Now, what I will say is that I think some of the details about what that is are left out of that, and to just blanketly send it to the committee, I mean, you probably need some specifics. Because I, when I had the conversation with him, I didn't understand what the public facing part meant, and if, the way that I thought that they explained it, it was saying that you could basically see the person's, if he's had complaints or something like that.
I think one of the things that I indicated to that group was that, and I was very forthcoming with them, I told them, I don't know what that is.
Right.
And so what I said is, we needed to go back to the table, and we needed to first find out what that is.
Which is why I raised that question, that your motion just says that the committee will take these things, but I think we need to put some caveats in there that the things that we can get explanation on, just so that the committee is, because what happens is, it really circumvents the chair's ability to say, what's first, second, third. If we send something back and say, you will do this, and then we spend the first two or three meetings trying to find details, there's no detail with that. I support any kind of police reform that'll make the process better. I just think there's a gap between a blanket placing this here by a motion and not having the details to what that means, what that stuff means.
But I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're asking for. We're asking for this to go to committee and for committee to determine what these items look like and whether or not they can be implemented in our city. I think that it's, you go ahead.
Would you, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion. I would like to ask...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is, Council Lady Ingram made the second.
She did.
And now I'm hearing that she's wanting to make some type of friendly amendment to the motion. So I need to understand...
Yeah, so right now, I guess unless we withdraw it and do it again to include, what was your addition? That's something that you'd have to talk to...
My addition was going to be taking these to the committees to research what will work within our ordinance and our city's policies and laws.
That's implied by the, that's implied by the request, so I don't think that you need to, that's an implication. Because let me explain this, we have a complete staff at our availability. So this is not something, and I think that our staff can go and they can find this information, and they can bring us back the details on what this would look like, what it could be, and then we can in turn present that information. And so I'm not, you know...
So the motion stands as is, right?
You comfortable with the motion, ma'am? Yes, well, it's, the implication is that this will be something that will go forward and will be researched to see what will work in our community as far as these requests are concerned. Okay? Okay?
All right, as a motion by Councilmember Waddell, to send these recommendations as stated to the committees. There's a second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on that? Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I've got two questions. All right, the first question is, you keep referring to closed session. Now, that's the closed session in the five o'clock meeting, correct?
Well, we've got one in five o'clock. The attorney said if we were going to talk about legalities, if they're, the people who called this meeting are satisfied with where we in this discussion and we don't need to talk about what this says in here, then I'm fine.
It was our understanding that it would, that the closed session at the five o'clock was going to contain that information. That was our understanding. Did we misunderstand that, City Attorney?
Well, that was not what I talked about. This special meeting was for these things. If that's the case, the attorney didn't tell me anything about it.
We've got to be real careful about how we define the closed session. So, I mean, if the city attorney can come up with wording so that we can discuss all these things in this next closed session, that's fine. But we did not put a closed session in the four o'clock meeting. So I want to make sure we don't do anything that the citizens would consider improper.
So the only thing I was stating was that the attorney needed to have a legal conversation with her client, this body, and she wanted to do it in closed session, related to the four o'clock meeting. The five o'clock meeting has a closed session, but no one talked to me about having it then. I'm not opposed to it, but this is the first time that I heard about it. There's a closed session about another matter? Yes, I already knew about, it was not pertaining to this. Madam Attorney, can you clarify?
So, Mr. Mayor, certainly if the council is so inclined, the council can make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege. You can do that at any time.
Right.
Consistent with providing legal advice.
Right.
If the council so desires, we can do that now, or we can roll that into the five o'clock meeting.
What I would like to do, if it pleases everyone, is to keep these two issues separate. Five o'clock, we have something very specific for five o'clock. While we're on this, if we want to have a motion to go into closed session, answer Councilman Dawkins' question, or if you're comfortable enough, take the vote on the motions that are on the floor.
Yes, because I have one more question. But yes, and I'm comfortable enough to take a vote on the motion on the floor. I'm going to support it. And then number two, I would support a motion for the four o'clock meeting to go into closed session.
To clarify some things.
That's right, that's right. So now my question is this. All right, so Madam Attorney, Council Lady Waddell talked about a citizen review board document that must be before the legislature now. That's what I heard her say. So, and I know that this, at least in the last two and a half years, I've not voted on anything going to the legislature. So was there something sent possibly prior to?
Yes.
And then since it was sent there, does it just sit there until one day it's taken up? Is that, is that an assumption, Madam Attorney?
What happened, Councilman Dawkins, was that it's a resolution, and of course, just like any other ask of the legislature, that particular legislative body takes it in consideration or they don't. And we sent a resolution, or a resolution was sent, I think, maybe 2013, 12, 13, but it needs to be updated, like we had to do recently with the county sales tax ask. So this was something that was definitely wanted the council, this council, to vote on yea and nay about a review board slash advisor, whatever comes out of that committee discussion. Yeah, I mean, however it is, but you'll need an updated one. They won't take a 2012 request.
Okay, that's what I'm after, because the way Council Lady Waddell phrased it was that it's already quote, "up at the legislature now," and you're saying that it's got to be updated, and then this council voted unanimously that we advocate for a citizen advisory board that does not require legislative approval. So my guidance earlier was, we send this to the internal committee and let them hash it out and come back with some...
I think that's what our motion is.
No, it was, no, it was not, Mr. Mayor. No, it was not. Well, I still have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
You do.
I do not appreciate being interrupted when I've got the floor. I don't like it at all.
All right, sir.
So my question is, so my question is, I need to understand the motion, because I'm willing to even add to the motion if the committee is going to do a citizen advisory board discussion. That's what I'm trying to get to. I want us to be very specific, Mr. Mayor.
I'm willing to accept a friendly amendment, if that is what Councilmember Dawkins is bringing to the table.
Can you repeat it just for clarity for Ms.?
For the third or the fourth time.
For the clerk. Yes, yes.
Most certainly. The motion is that we send to committee the following items as presented by the Ville's Voices as their requests. A public facing police misconduct webpage to review that information and find out how it would be implemented. To review and determine how it would be implemented, separating internal affairs from the police department. To review and find out how best practices could be adopted from comparative police reform efforts. If Councilmember Dawkins would like for us to also consider their first request, which was a citizen review board, as a friendly amendment, I am willing to accept that friendly amendment with my motion.
What are you saying, Councilman Dawkins? You've already read, read it, so...
Well, no, she, I spoke earlier, and then she made a motion, and then I hit my green. I did green and red when we were speaking.
I got your buttons. You have the floor right now. So were you clear with the amendment?
I'm not going to support a citizen review board. I'm not going to support whatever the village, Ville's Voices...
Is my motion standing?
Well, but, Mr. Mayor, my concern is, the council voted unanimously to advocate for a citizens' advisory board.
Councilman Dawkins, we have a motion on the floor, second it. It's been amended, from what I understand.
You didn't make the amendment, so there's no amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion, a proper second. This was the discussion phase, we can up and down vote it. If there's, if there is, and council, we have to move on because we do need to talk to our attorney. So this is a motion by... So, this is a motion by, by the, uh, the Waddell Ingram motion to send these uh, items to committee, uh, for further review. Alright, council, I need you, need you to vote on that. Uh, Councilwoman Banks-McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, green?
Yes, green.
Okay, alright. So passes, uh, nine to one.
Thank you, council.
Go to, go to committee. Committee will get details, and we certainly continue to invite input from all citizen, uh, all groups and concerned citizens. So, this is, uh, this is a great start to, uh, community engagement. Um, can we, can, is that a motion to go into closed session? Okay, so, there's a motion by...
No, I, I had a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
If it's no problem. We received a number of concerns. And I know you responded to the email, but since we've got some things that are going to committees, we received a number of resolutions, proclamations, and whatever other name you want to give them. Um, one was from the 100 Black Men of Cape Fear of America, and one was from, not, not sure of their proper name, but the pastors coalition. So, when are we going to put all of that? Because that needs to, we don't need to have one over another. I think all of them ought to go to committees.
Well, well, Councilman Head, really...
I know you said it would be another date, but I was just wanting to...
Yes, sir, no, well, what I was going to say was that the whole intent behind the, the, the process, the committee process, is community engagement. So I think you're exactly right. That whether it's the Ville Voices, or whether the, the presentation from the next group, I think all of them have something to contribute to the discussion. And then this council through those committees will see what, what we come up with, what's the final product. So certainly the 100 Black Men, the other resolution that you said, some of these recommendations don't have the details in the research.
Right.
That's the part that we've got to close the gap on, I think. But we are inviting every citizen to send us what you think is helpful. We all get a number of emails with some great ideas, because I don't think that all the brain power stops with the 10 of us. So we need all of the groups doing all of this work.
So, then are you saying that those resolutions need to be sent also whenever you all get the chairs together?
We will meet with those chairs, okay? And, uh, the, the, the co-chairs, uh, according to, to the two committees. The external co-chairs, Councilman Wright. Internal is Councilmember Waddell, and Mayor Protem and I will be co-chairs for both. We will have a meeting, whatever that process is, we need to be able to push that out to the public to tell them we need feedback.
I'll make sure that you all get that resolution.
Yes, sir, but certainly, certainly want to include the 100 Black Men and the pastors and everyone else. Okay, alright. Council, can we go into closed, Councilman Davis, you had a, uh... Okay, so there was a motion to go into closed session, right?
Mayor Coven, okay, Mayor Coven, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, in turn to closed session to confer with our city attorney.
So attorney-client privilege, this is the second by Councilmember Waddell, any discussion on that? Alright, council, I'll look to you for votes, go into closed session. Council, Councilmember Davis. Banks-McLaughlin, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Yes, so what do I need to do, call in?
Oh, yes, ma'am, if you could, call in. That's right. Jennifer's got you coming.